Hey, hey, hey. Welcome, welcome. Godric here, your stock market mentor. I'm a little late tonight, um, can't sleep. What are you doing up? Well, I'll talk about some stock market stocks. Tonight I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight stocks for you. Tonight, I will do some stock market mentoring, get your journals out, write some notes down, learn some stuff. Let me show you a couple of things. Give me some likes. Welcome, uh, Queen B, Tubi. Welcome, I'm just a brick ham. Brack Johnny, welcome to the stock market, I guess Tuesday nights, um, past midnight. Godric here, your stock market mentor. Missed yesterday, my bad. I don't know, I was hanging out. Um, I want to show you a few stocks tonight if you'll be have time, can't sleep, get your journals out, write some notes. Hey guys, I appreciate you. Wolfie Gregory, welcome. Mitch Mary, welcome. Jewels. Nunea, welcome Bryant Savage Savage Rodrigo Traveler Razor. Guys, give me some likes and if you can, um, just do one share, one share, I'm happy. Uh, probably go for about half an hour tonight. I just want to run through some stocks, give you some ideas, maybe a few trades. And just answer some questions about the stock market, about stocks, maybe I can help. Appreciate you. Okay, so, um, first thing, uh, we're in a bull market, guys. We're still going up. I think a lot of you guys like worried about like a stock market crash, you know? It's not happening, it's just going higher. So I have some stocks here for eight stocks. That are going high that are in what we call all time highs. Well, some of them are, not all. And, um, there's a theory about buying a stock is all time high. Another sounds kind of productive, but let me explain. If you have a stock that's going up and up and up, okay, and it breaks the all time high, okay? The theory is that it can go higher and break another all time high, another all time high, another all time high, it just kind of just keeps going up. If you look at these stocks like Microsoft, like Apple, like long term, very successful companies. You'll see that they have broken again and again and again, all time high like this, this just keep going up exponentially, basically. Thank you guys for your likes. Give me some more likes, uh, one share each, I'm happy. So, um, buy a stock, the, 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 the theory is buy a stock that breaks the all time high and what? It'll go higher. Now, this is kind of better for traders because when a trader can do this, they get in high, they go higher, they sell, they make a profit. Long-term investors, still good, but not so much because what? Cause they could break the high, then they could come down, you know, then you'll say, oh, I kicked myself in the ass because I bought it too high and now it's coming down. So mostly for traders, but even long-term investors can buy a company in all time high because what? Cause it's going higher, it's successful, it's making money, it went from A to Z. Went up over time, look at the 10-year chart, look at the five-year chart, appreciate you guys. Yap, Don, buy Amazon. Yes, actually, Amazon is one of the stocks I have right tonight. Matter of fact, it's the first one after I, I tell you about Apple, I think. Amazon is in its all-time high. I have some stats for you on Amazon. Two hundred dollars today and two cents plus two eighty. All-time high. Market cap, two hundred and eight, I'm sorry, two point oh eight trillion, that's with a T. That's two thousand billion. Yeah, you know, when are we gonna have our first trillionaire? Let's see. Elon Musk is about two hundred billion, Jeff Bezos is about two hundred plus billion. Uh, Warren Buffett manages a portfolio. The Berkshire Hathaway, three hundred thirty-one billion. We're getting there, we'll get there. Um, I know the king of she, whatever, I don't know how rich they are, but guess the stock market, we're not quite there, but we'll get there. I think in our lifetime, we'll see a trillionaire. Uh, the stock market has become the new frontier for billionaires. Similar, similar to real estate investing back in the eighties, seventies, sixties. The new frontier is the stock market. I just said it because, you know, the biggest money in the world, Jeff Bezos, Elon Musk, et cetera. Basically all in stocks. Okay, so, stock market is where it's at. Okay, questions on that? Yeah, Nvidia is going up, buy Nvidia. Nvidia's ultimate high is one forty, so, so write that down. That was happened last week and it came down. And I was trying to, trying to climb back up, it's, it's climb its way back up. So I would buy Nvidia here, uh, at one twenty-two. Down one sixty-three today. Now Nvidia's market cap, three point oh two trillion. Three point oh two trillion. And I think Nvidia is gonna knock out, uh, both Microsoft and Apple for the top king, the big boss of the stock market. I just said it because Nvidia has more oomph, it has more hotness. Apple, you know, Microsoft, old and fat, let's just be real. They're good, they have steady revenue, but Nvidia can expand better, it's has a better AI division, I think. So I think that's gonna be the, the stock of the future. What can I do? I bought Nvidia already at one forty. Hold it. Uh, if you have a hundred shares, write a cover call. Can I show it to you real quick? You know how to share Nvidia, right? Uh, at this price, it's twelve thousand, right? And VDA, but if you spent fourteen thousand, that's okay. Hold it for a minute, let it go up, but if you can write a cover call, let me show you. Click on options, uh, it's June, so you go to July, right? I'm gonna go to July, and we go all options and and all strikes, and we go to July, the third week is the nineteenth. So you, you agreed to write that cover call for just add the money. Stock's one twenty-two, so probably like the one thirty, let me see. We're looking for a sweet spot. One thirty will be, is this right? July nineteenth. Oh, wait a minute, I screwed up. It's already the second, so we're gonna go August, July, it's July fifth. So we're gonna go August second, sorry, August second. That gives us basically a month. Write the cover call, let's go, uh, let's see, the one thirty is three seventy-five, the one twenty-nine, the one twenty-eight. Okay, the one twenty-seven, so write the one twenty-seven cover call for Nvidia, one twenty-seven minus one, sell one CC. Call, uh, one twenty-seven strike at what? Four eighty by four ninety-five, okay? That gives you four dollars and eighty cents on the bid per share, which is four hundred eighty dollars back in your pocket. That's why it's good, that's why the cover call is good. Four hundred eighty dollars back on your investment, you could use every month. Now let's do math, okay? Calculator. Math is good, return on investment is good. Let's do it. Four eighty point eight divided by share price of one twenty-two equals three point nine three percent return. Three point nine three percent return. That's four hundred eighty dollars return at a twelve thousand dollar investment. Three point nine three percent return. If you do that ten times a year, I mean, you could do it every month, but let's say ten times a year, you get about thirty-nine percent return. Mm-hmm, that's thirty-nine K return on a hundred K. That's on a million, it's three hundred ninety-three K. Mm-hmm, meet me at the boat in the Caymans. Now, just with a hundred shares, four hundred eighty dollars, what did I give you? Four hundred eighty dollars a month, that's your business. You have investment for it's twelve K, hundred shares in Nvidia, you write the cover card every month. Four hundred eighty dollars, that's gonna pay what? Let's say, might pay for your car note, maybe electricity. Definitely fit some Starbucks in there and then your Netflix subscription, maybe some food. Uh, what's your master game plan? Did you retire off the market? I did. I did. Uh, you know, I, I, I have to say I have a small account. I just have small, uh, uh, expenses. Not, you know, not like multi-millionaire status, you know? Um, I spend too much money, that's my problem. But you can't just figure out how much you have monthly, say eight K in bills. Okay, and then do some math, right? If you get three point nine three percent return on cover calls, right? You have eight K in bills. So you go eight thousand divided by point three nine three, what's that give you? Oops, no, sorry, sorry. Messed up. Point oh three nine three. All I need is two hundred and three thousand dollars and I'm good. Two hundred and three thousand dollars, see, this, I like math, crazy like that. Times three point nine three percent a month gives me eight thousand dollars. So I need, I'm good. You can break it up a couple of different stocks, I'm not saying put all in one basket, you know? But, you know, stretch it out, do some cover calls. Now your bills are paid. Doesn't take really much to retire in the market. You don't gotta have multi-multi-multi-millionaire, you know? Uh, you know, I'm not, Elon Musk, you know, I mean, I won't say no, I won't mind, but you don't gotta, you don't gotta have all that. So, real estate or get financial advisor. Not taking people up right now. Semi-future options, designer, I've been around, I have any kind of treasuries. Any, lower, any kind of treasuries, um. Put some money in stocks, uh, open up an account of Schwab, uh, I was with TD, but TD merged or was bought by Schwab. Schwab is probably the best because of great customer service and that means a lot. Twenty-four hour access to your accounts. And they have all the tools and bells and whistles you need for trading. And they can, they have brokers that walk you through the trades. So for you guys that are new, um, you guys give me some likes. You guys that are new, uh, open your account as Schwab, not taking people right now. I will take, I will do panels, not today. I want to read the stocks and just let it one go to sleep. Tomorrow we have a, a day, a trading day, July third, and the stock market will be open normal time. Um, Thursday will be closed on the fourth and then back Friday for a full day. Did I say that right? Um, close fourth of July. Uh, Wednesday will be full, regular time tomorrow, I mean, as when the market opens today, really. Thursday close with the fourth, Friday back to regular business and then Monday back to regular business, so, yeah. So, buy some stocks, you know, I'm gonna give you eight stocks tonight that I think are good. I'll just give them to you because write them down, get your journals out. Amazon, AMZN, it broke a new high, it's in a buy, it's a, it's a hot tamale. Apple, AAPL broke a new high. It's a hot tamale going up. Nvidia, um, close to the all-time high, it broke a new high recently, went down, coming back. Uh, symbols, AMZN for Amazon, AAPL for Apple, NVDA for Nvidia. These are just great stocks that are just fat and they're big and they're, I don't know, too big to fail. They're very in demand. And they're going up, okay? Microsoft, MSFT, uh, also broke into a new high, it's in play. Microsoft, by the way, is the top dog, if you look at it, three point four one trillion market cap. Share price, four fifty-nine, up two today, up two fifty-five. I would say that, you know, Microsoft is the big boss and they, they also have an AI department, an AI department, but I still think Nvidia is gonna overtake them. I just think it's, you know, it just has more momentum, more, uh, leverage. Because Microsoft is just so fat, they have, you know, so many more employees and I think it's just not as great as, um, uh, Apple or Nvidia, you know? But it's a buy because they're going up. Uh, Google, um, also broke a new high in play, one eighty-five per share, up two twenty-five today. Market cap is one point two five trillion. I got three more, okay? Tesla, TSLA, two thirty-one. This one is far from its all-time high, but I think that it's going up. Uh, I think Elon is, you know, is the, the grand wizard and he's, um, very charismatic. And, uh, no matter what he does, people have throw, throw money at him. And he's not gonna Tesla fail and Tesla is still number one for EV, so I think it's undervalued. Two thirty-one today, up twenty-one points. See, today is, is the Tesla shareholders dream to be up ten percent in one day. Two thirty-one, up twenty-one points. Market cap, seven thirty-seven billion. Now I remember Tesla, um, briefly crossed a trillion dollar mark when it was much higher, closer to four hundred dollars a share. Um, should I pull it up? Should I pull it up? Tesla. This one is really under value. If you figure that it could break an all-time high, this is under valued, watch this. Tesla in the, just in the, in the fifty-two year range, fifty-two week range, two ninety-nine, it was two ninety-nine. I think that was actually the all-time highs, let's say three hundred. So it can, it can still move seventy points before it breaks all-time high. And in that way, it's, it's more under valued than all these other ones. Uh, Qualcomm, opinion on Qualcomm. Um, Qualcomm is not as great, um, as low as, but slower, let me pull it up for you, Qualcomm. I remember investing in Qualcomm like in the nineties, like thirty years ago. You know, there's the two hundred dollar share, fifty-two week range, two thirty, so it's getting there, um, it's doing good. Five-year chart shows it's doing great. Uh, market cap, two, two twenty-three billion, decent, pretty fat, uh, uh, two point seven eight short interest. I like it, I like it like PE. Um, what's the PE? Uh, says twenty-six, so decent. Um, Qualcomm's going up, it's, but it's not gonna be as hot as Nvidia. I have a position in the Qs, Q, 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 uh, and that's like the top one hundred NASDAQ stocks. Um, I like that because it's just more, I think more balanced. Uh, and that'll probably outperform, at least the call options will, outperform Qualcomm. But Qualcomm's got, can't stand to bet, they're rated B in the Schwab equity ratings. They're rated A in the MSCI. Morningstar gives it three stars. Okay, um, where was I? Oh, two more stocks, Walmarts. And everyone complains about Walmart, they don't pay their employees enough, their employees are on welfare, whatever, but uh, stock is in play, it broke a new high at sixty-nine. And it's only sixty-eight dollars, Walmart, sixty-eight dollars, WMT symbol, plus fifty-nine cents. Uh, market cap, five hundred and forty-seven billion. Uh, you know, and like thinking about Walmart, it's like been going on for, I don't know, seventy-five years, whatever, and they're only five hundred and forty-seven billion, so the technology is always gonna be king, it's just, I don't know, it leads, you know, other companies, you know? Walmart, though it's great, though it's a go, and, and it's only sixty-eight dollars a share, so that's better in that case. Hundred shares would cost you six thousand eight hundred, you know? You know, hundred shares of Apple will cost you twenty-two thousand because it's two hundred twenty, two hundred twenty dollars a share. So look at Walmart, WMT, the last one's Meta, Facebook, MTA. Five oh nine a share. They're not at the all-time high, they're short of the all-time high, about, the all-time high is about five thirty. But I think they're good in this bull market, they're also gonna break the all-time high, so keep an eye on Meta. Five oh nine today, plus forty-two. Market cap, one point two nine two trillion. So like, if you look at Amazon, two trillion, Apple, three point three trillion, Nvidia, three point oh two trillion. Microsoft, three point four one trillion, Google, one point two five trillion, and Meta, one point two nine trillion. These are trillion dollar companies. And they're big and fat and they know how to do business. And like, these big companies have proved themselves over time, they went up in share price exponentially. And they're gonna make it through any kind of, you know, pandemic situation, economic downturn. They, they know how to make money because even if they have a problem, they're gonna, they're gonna tighten their belt, you know, they're gonna lay off employees. Cut their bottom line and then what? Close their factories and then what? Their stock price shoots up because why? Because more efficiency? Shareholders like that. So they're really not gonna fail. They're just, they're just in too many countries, they have their hand in too many successful things. They have like a hundred thousand employees each or more. Amazon has one point, Amazon has one point seven million employees. I mean, that's a lot of jobs, Jeff Bezos. Walmart also has one point seven million employees or on or about. You know, that's a lot of jobs, you know? So I look at it like, uh, perspective, like it's massive and it's, it's successful and it's business, it's capitalism and it's gonna keep going. And these other small companies that are trying to compete, most of them get crushed, most of them, not all. I was just talking to my friend about Bros, uh, B-R-O-S, which is Dutch Brothers Coffee. Uh, forty-dollar share going up, B-R-O-S, can I take a look? Now, they're not better than Starbucks, but, you know, they're, they're, they're getting market share at Starbucks because they're just doing, they look at Starbucks, they just do stuff better, like, look, Starbucks drives it, we're gonna improve that. Look, Starbucks Frappuccino, we're gonna improve that. Look, Starbucks Coffee, we're gonna do better. Starbucks Customer Service, we're gonna do better. So sometimes a small company can ride the coattails and can do great. And can gain, can gain market share. The others, other times, they're just gonna get crushed by these, these big dogs, you know? Um, Bros, B-R-O-S symbol, take a look at that. Uh, Chipotle is growing, CMG loves Chipotle. Write it down, CMG going up. Options on opinion on Qualcomm. Okay, so, um, let me show you this trade behind me, okay? I just wanted to show you. I just did this trade recently. I bought a call option for Apple, just one September, so I get three months, right? Um, the two forty strikes, so twenty points higher than the share price. It costs one fifty-three when I bought it. I bought it like, when it was like two fourteen, two ten, it went up. Now it's gone to three twenty-three. I just want to show you about leverage. Look, so when the stock is up three points from two twenty, one point six percent. Okay, the call option is up, what? Twenty-one percent. So it's like eleven or twelve times leverage, write that down. Twelve times leverage on this September call for Apple. And like I told you, Apple's breaking new highs. Uh, Amazon's breaking new highs, Microsoft, Google, Walmart. So a call option in these stocks will probably keep going up. Give yourself three months so you're not like behind the eight ball, you have time to trade, that's what I do. And, and don't hold the options, do exploration, just plan on buying high and selling higher, you know? Here, about one fifty-three, this hundred fifty-three bucks, that's all I cost, just times by a hundred for, for call options and then and so more than double, you follow me? That's your leverage. Uh, you know, small money here, but the example is what? Is you can make a nice return. And if the stock does go up, it looks like it's in play, you can make a profit, close it, and here, here's the tough part. Pull the trigger. When you see a profit, pull the trigger, close it, get out, reevaluate, see if you want, just wait. Hold that, that profit, just, just hold it there, be patient, and then see when you want to get back in. They say bulls make money, bears make money, pigs don't. What that means is whether you're short or long the market, you're gonna be okay, but if you're a pig, if you get too greedy, you're not gonna pull that trigger, you're gonna keep trying to wait for the, I wanna get more, I wanna get more, I wanna get more, what's gonna happen? So they come back down and lose all that profit. And like, you know, lose money. So if you get one of these call options, I'm not saying to do that, but obviously these call options are in play. Think about getting, you know, double, triple, quadruple, and then just pull the trigger. And send me a DM and tell you, tell me how well you did. But if you, you know, how many times, I just show hands, we got into this position and went way up, oh, I'm gonna you tell, you tell your family, your friends, hey, I made so much money in Apple, whatever. And then what happens? Comes all the way down, like, fuck, I should have sold. Damn, why didn't I sell? Dude, look, you plan the trade, as you're doing the trade, listen. I pay a hundred fifty bucks for this call, I'm gonna get out four bucks, five bucks, three eighty, triple, whatever. But, but stick to your guns, plan your play and then play your play, write it down, plan your play and then play your plan, and then pull the trigger. That's the difference between success and failure in the market. Like, somebody's beautiful managers that manage eight hundred million. They haven't had the luxury to lose money, do, when that, when that call or shares go up and they're trading, they pull the trigger. Because if they, they lose money, they're gonna get fired. So you guys have the luxury to screw around with your money, lose money, bad trades. These, these, these professionals don't have that luxury. And, and if, they're not, they're not pigs, they're not, so if, if they're, if your goal is four points and their goal is three points, who's gonna reach it faster? And who's gonna like sell first? So just be, you know, write this down, take small gains and walk away. Take small gains and walk away. That's all I gotta say today. I gave you eight stocks, I gave you the symbols, I gave you one, two, three, four, five of these stocks are going up. Amazon, Apple, Nvidia, Microsoft, Google, Tesla, Walmart, and Meta. And a call option like this, you can get like leverage, like ten, twelve-fold leverage. Make a plan, pull the trigger, and you get a profit. I'm about to, about to pull the trigger on this one, and when I do that, I'm just, just wait, and if it keeps going up, I'm gonna open another one and do it again. But just, just have the same position and keep going, you get, you go into that greedy mode and you know what's gonna happen. So all, now all that profit's gonna come down. Appreciate you guys. Um, before we wrap up, give me some likes, give me like one share each, I appreciate you. I'm trying to get this, trying to blast these, this out to all tech talk. Anybody do stocks, meet me. Try to do Monday nights, but I'm gonna be here on different days. When you buy calls or what strategy do you use? Okay, user, uh, when I buy calls, uh, okay, so like these eight stocks I showed you are fat, they're successful, they have a PE, but look, they have a PE, which means they're profitable. They have massive volume, which is like two, three, four, five, ten million a day trading. They have a ten-year chart that just goes straight up in ten years. So first of all, stock selection, user. Stock selection needs to be great, okay? But these stocks will keep you out of trouble, I assure you. And then you buy the call, go three months out, pay attention, write this down, three months out. Buy just above the strike price, so two twenty, buy two forty, buy two fifty, buy two twenty. If it was Microsoft at four fifty-nine, buy like five hundred or four eighty. It was Google, one eighty-five, buy two hundred. It's Tesla, two thirty, buy two fifty. So you're, you're, you're technically buying smoke, right? Because in three months, if that stock doesn't go up, buy, buy, you just, I'm gonna just tell you upfront. If, if you're, you're trading these options and, and you're buying calls and you're in, you're doing this kind of trade and the stock doesn't go up, just kiss your whole, a whole position goodbye, I'm gonna say that right now. But, 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 hey, we're in big companies, we're in goods, successful companies, we're in Apple, we're in Nvidia, we're in Microsoft. These companies are breaking new highs, probably, they're going up, just look at the chart, like the theory is the trend will continue. If it's breaking in new high, we're in the bull market, these stocks are breaking new highs, probably go higher. And then what? Stop, the option will go up twelve times, twelve times leverage, pull the trigger. Questions? Questions? Uh, Tesla calls, same idea, uh, this Apple call, go three months out, just above the strike, two, uh. Uh, strike two forty, just above the, the share price, same thing for Tesla, Tesla's a little bit hot, a little bit more expensive. Same idea, um, tell me about GM, oh, bro, don't, don't ask about GM, S M C I. Super Micro Computer will go up, um, you know, roller coaster ride, be prepared for a risk, but if you do, but we buy call option. I mean, the shares are gonna go up, I think tandem with Nvidia. But it's more, it's a smart company, so more risk, um, and if you buy the call options. Be prepared for a roller coaster ride, but if you, if you buy call options, give me so three months, I think S M C I will come in, you know? Those call options will come in with Nvidia call options and with Nvidia shares. Can you show you what's, uh, I don't show my personal account, um, just my, just my choice to do that, but I can tell you, I'm, I'm some of these trades. I don't, I don't like to say, you know, financial advice, but let's just say as a case of purposes, because. My, my experience is when people follow me, oh man, it's like a crush, it's like I show you this trade I'm doing. Then they jump on it thinking that I know better. As a mentor, I need, I wanna teach you to, to do your own trades for yourself and not to follow other people, that's the thing. Follow people, then you get into the trade for the wrong reason, I want you to look at your data. And confirm that you are doing the trade for you. Because if you're running my coattail, that I'm supposed to tell you what I sell, hell no, I'm not gonna tell you what I sell. I don't wanna, you know, uh, you to be dragging on my coattail, so I want you to do your own great trades. And don't need to tell me about it, just tell me, you know, if you did great. Um, but I just don't show my personal account, but I will show you this trade, just one example. Uh. I got the shares around eight twenty, for S M C I, also got to test, I'm gonna tell you something. Jas Solares, great name. I want you to think about when you wanna pull the trigger on S M C I, if you're long-term, then you may not be interested in trading. But if, but if you look at S M C I, I know it hit twelve hundred. So how did you not sell, you see, like, i- if you, if you were a money manager, and your investment went to twelve hundred. Dude, pull the trigger, just think, you know, and then when you get a great return, you pull the trigger, and then you wait. Had your cash, you're a trader, you wait and see when you wanna get it, you might wanna move over to another stock, you might, might move over to Apple. Which is doing great, Nvidia, which is doing great, Tesla, which is still actually waking up. But I think it will eventually come back, Walmart, which is doing great. Okay, uh, dollar cost average, um, I don't like to average down, user. Because you can get in trouble doing that, but I generally, if I have a long position, long-term position, I can generally. Buy the dip once, but if it keeps going down, I don't buy anymore, just buy the dip once as far as averaging down. Because you know, there's that story about the, 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 the golfer who was a stock market investor, he, he bought us shares of a hundred. And he's like, oh, it went to ninety, so I just bought more, and now my average is ninety-five, I'm good, and then went to eighty, I bought more, then my average is eighty-five, seventy, sixty. When the stock went down to twenty-five, he dropped dead, so it's like, I don't know, so, um, just, just. Average down once, if you're long-term, because you can get in trouble doing that. N K L A, dollar cost average. Um, you guys got my best stocks tonight, or, or some of them. I'm gonna look at this, I'm gonna look up this stock for you. Uh, what is it, N L K? N K L A, is that, is that, is that Nicola, Nicholas Tesla? And then when I wrap up, appreciate you, um, I will be back next Monday. Follow me, I'll, if anybody's followed these tonight, I'm gonna follow them back, if you wanna send me a DM, that's okay. I'll try to answer all the questions when I can, N K L A, I wanna warn you, if I tell you it's trash, don't be upset. Nicola Corporation. Nicola Corporation operates as a technology innovator and interrogator, integrator, sorry. It develops energy and transportation solutions in the United States and internationally, the company operates in truck and energy units. Eight dollars and twenty cents. Yeah, I don't, I don't, can't do it. Hey, I had, I had a high of. One thousand nine hundred, did you know that? Back in two thousand twenty, and it just went down and down. It may go into Pennystar territory, unfortunately. Um, volume three K, that can't be right, three thousand volume? I can't do it, this is like, what's the market cap, market cap, three hundred and sixty-three million. So you're basically buying a stock that has the value of, of, of a house in Beverly Hills, that's a problem. Uh, Nicola. Uh, this is actually reverse, like all these stocks, Apple, Microsoft, Google, Tesla. This is the, look at the chart, the chart's reversed, it went up, it started higher, then went down, think about the people who lost money in that. Um, yeah, I can't do it, I know it has no PE, I'm, I'm just telling you, another P is not there. PE blank, estimate minus two ninety-one. Um. I know there's a theory about buying stocks that are losing money, but I just can't. I gotta have standards, so. Um, can't do it. Any other questions, guys, before we wrap, appreciate you. Uh, be back here Monday night, happy fourth, today we're gonna have a, a trading day, and then fourth, we're gonna be on vacation. And back on Friday, maybe I'll come back Friday. Thank you, guys, appreciate you, Patrick out.